Good afternoon, everybody. Thanks for coming out this afternoon. To start, we're going to have Cheryl Reeve. She's going to talk briefly about the heart review.
Just a quick reminder that we will be accepting submissions through March 31st. If you have a question about what kinds of things we're looking for, if you haven't seen the first edition borrowing from somebody at this point, we do have word that there will be more copies coming in a few weeks, which will be available for those of you who weren't able to buy the first edition. But I'm encouraging all of you to think about submitting something for the review, whether it's artwork, or photography, or prose, or poetry, or a photo of your crafts or art, craft work. Those are the kinds of things that we're looking for. So you have till March 31st. Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have Francine Frank. She's going to talk a little bit about the scholarship committee.
Hi, can you, my voice keeps disappearing. So I hope it stays here for a few minutes. So I'm just here on behalf of the scholarship committee to deliver a thank you and a reminder. Thank you goes to people who have already contributed to the Beverwick Employee Scholarship Fund, and a reminder to those people that we're still raising money, and we have until March, I think it's March 15th is the deadline. Now, you've probably, you've seen this and read it, but as Beverwick residents, we should all be proud of the 20-year record of this scholarship program, which was founded and funded by Beverwick residents. And in the 20 years that's been in existence, something over 100 scholarships have been awarded. Now, since the price of education, like everything else, has gone up, the scholarships are now worth $2,500 a year for up to four years. That means we have to have sufficient funds for new awardees and enough to complete the four-year obligation to former awardees. And the number of scholarships awarded is not fixed. So change, it varies a little bit from year to year. The applicants have to meet all the requirements and in order to be eligible, and it's a pretty high bar. So they vary between two, this year or last year, we awarded four. And you have gotten to know three of them so far through the profiles in the newsletter. I think there's one more coming out in the March newsletter. So I hope that if you haven't given, or you want to give again, it's always, more money is always, is always useful. We never know how much, I mean, I don't know if it would happen if we got so many eligible awardees that we didn't have enough money to fund them. So far, that hasn't happened, but hopefully it will. So I hope you'll join us. It's, the contributions are tax deductible, and you'll soon get a second letter from the scholarship committee, which outlines all the ways in which you can give. And there's a box at the reception desk. If you ever check the door for it, it will welcome them. It's sort of like the lockbox on W, if you listen to W E M C. So again, thank you, and I hope I can thank, be able to thank more people in the future.
And certainly, thank you to the scholarship committee and all the work that, that you guys put forth in your meetings and with the solicitation, so very much appreciated. And I know I say it all the time, and it might sound like a broken record, but this is something that sets Beverwick apart, and something, you know, that benefits everybody all around, and helps us certainly attract staff and retain staff. So it's very much appreciated.
Yeah, I should add that most of the awardees have been from the waitstaff here.
Yes.
And so you will know them all personally.
Yes, yep. And if you couldn't hear her, most of the awardees are from the waitstaff, as they usually are. That's historically been the case, so it's good for them. Next up, we have Mr. Sakwitz. He's going to talk about the nomination committee.
Thank you, Paula. Yes, I'm representing the nominating committee for the resident council right now. Basically, the four members of the nominating committee, plus myself, for the past month or so, have interviewed about two dozen or so residents who might be interested in serving on the resident council for the term that will begin on June 1st of this year. We have now identified nine candidates who are willing to stand for election to the resident council. All seven positions on the resident council are open, as they usually are each and every year. What this probably means is that most likely, we are going to have an actual balloting for the resident council, and that will take place in the first two weeks of the month of May. You will have published in the bulletin next month, in the March bulletin, the names of the nine candidates who have agreed to stand for election. There will also be a picture of a sample ballot that we probably will be using, or some modification of it. Certainly, we have until April 30th still to interview, to speak to anyone else, any resident, who is interested in becoming a candidate for the resident council. Resident council is an advisory body. It speaks to the director, Paula. She takes very assiduous notes at every monthly meeting, and it's a way for you to serve the community of residents here at Beverwick. It's a very honorable position. I encourage any of you, either to speak for yourself, or to speak with someone else. Certainly, if you would like someone else, a friend that you would like to see on the council, speak to them. They have to have your support, of course. They have to agree to be a candidate. But right now, we do have nine. I wouldn't mind having another one or two. That being said, probably what will happen for a timeline that's coming up, probably the next month, as I said, will be published in the bulletin, the names of the candidates that we do have as of the moment, nine, as well as a sample ballot. Then, once April 30th comes and goes, then we go into the month of, of, of April. Excuse me. Before that, in the April town meeting here, you will have an opportunity to see the nine candidates, or anyone else that we may add between now and then. They'll have one minute, one minute only, in order to introduce themselves. We have, we have a hook, actually. One minute, one minute only to introduce themselves, reintroduce just themselves to you once again, to tell you, you know, how long they've been here, kind of activities they've been participating here in, in Beverwick. And then, in the first two weeks of May, having detailed the exact timeline, but it certainly will probably take place over a few days, probably something like three days or so, in which you will be given a ballot that you can pick up at the front desk. One ballot per person. Keep that ballot, keep that ballot, because if it gets lost or destroyed, no second chances. No, my dog ate my ballot on the reelection, like, no. No, that's not going to happen. Of course, there's also the other consideration. There will be nine names. Only up to seven residents are to be selected. If you choose eight or all nine, unfortunately, we are going to have to invalidate that ballot. What the ballot box will look like is this. So I want to thank Mr. Frank Natty for constructing this very lovely ballot box. I don't want to jiggle it too much. I don't want to set off any sort of triggering alarms that will alert us, any sort of tampering with the, with the ballot box. But it will be at the front lobby, under the watchful eyes of our security staff, day and night, so we can read the ballot. So that's what's coming the first two weeks of May. Once again, I ask you, if you think about it, submit your names to the resident council. People would love to hear from you.
All right. Question?
Oh, boy.
We'll flip a coin. Or, or else we'll, you might do, what is it? Well, I can take resistance. We've all, we've all experienced that in our childhood. Anything else? Okay, thank you.
I'm sure it'll be as high-tech as our ballot box. All right. Next up, we have Sue Lover. And she's gonna, I'm not sure what you're covering today, but...
It's hard to follow, Albert. It's hard to follow. Okay, it's my annual plea file of life. You all have it on the side of your refrigerator. You should. If you don't have one, or it was taken to the hospital, or you took it off, or it fell down, please see me for a new one. And please fill out the inside paper and keep it updated. Now, these can be found in front of the desk on that little table in the brown notebook, all right? Please, please keep your emergency contacts updated. If someone gets a new cell phone, someone moves out of state, I really need that updated number, okay? The EMS loves Beverwick because we have that information. And if you don't keep it updated, security can run to my office, and if I have those updated numbers, they can get it through the files. Okay, so that was my number one. Number two, we have two pharmacies now that are delivering to Beverwick, all right? We have the one in Delmar, Kelly's Pharmacy. That's the one that gave us our shots this year. And we have Capital Regional Pharmacy off of 155 that gave us our, our first vaccines against COVID. Okay, so if you're having trouble getting your medication delivered, please give me a call, 2134. There is help, and there's, it's very easy. You don't have to do anything but call the pharmacy, and they'll do all the work for you to get it switched. Yes? Is there a charge for that? Oh, I'm gonna say something, Jan. It's free. No charge. Kelly's just sent me today from Delmar. It's free because he's had a large group from Beverwick come over. Capital Region was starting out with a fee, and depending on how many people they got, they were going to go free also. And one more thing, yes?
CVS also will deliver now. I don't know whether you have to be a member, but I get my stuff delivered.
CVS has been difficult to work for, for me, for me.
I agree, yeah.
Because sometimes they say, we'll deliver, sometimes we don't. Sometimes they put it in the mail, then they charge you, then you have to become a member of the CVS club. And I, I, I'm not saying that CVS isn't good, but it has changed. Yeah, yeah. Another thing, I have been looking into grocery delivery, and as you all know, we were spoiled rotten by ShopRite. And by that, I mean, you could pick up the phone and give them your order. There is no such thing now. So Price Chopper and Hannaford, you can go online, pick out your groceries, and Instacart will be delivering them. Now, Cory, our tech person, is going to give us a program on how to use Instacart, okay? And Linda Godoy and I are attending.
So Instacart will also deliver from Whole Foods and from Honest Wait.
Instacart will deliver from Honest Wait and Whole Foods. I have yet to call Trader Joe's. I, okay, I got online, I didn't see delivery from Traders, okay? And just one more thing. If you are concerned about falling and, and, you know, not being able to get help, call me, because I can put you in touch with a lifeline, okay? Thank you.
All right. All right, my turn. So Spectrum update is happening, I promise this time. I'm just gonna leave that in. No, it's too tight. All right, so Spectrum update is happening on the 4th and the 5th. So we're gonna start on the 4th. So that's gonna be the, the changeover to the digital cable. Cory is gonna be doing a informational session Monday. Do you know what time, offhand? 11 o'clock, okay. I figured it was 11, I just wanted to make sure. So she will also, at the same time, be educating the staff. And the staff will be meeting with her, because we're gonna have some of the same questions that you're gonna have about the process and how it's gonna work. I will say, though, and she'll bring this up again at 11, that we are gonna be just systematically working our way through the wings. And it's not like we can tell you, I'm gonna be in your, at your apartment at 12, because we don't know, until we get started. So really, I know that the basic of the process is gonna be unscrewing the cable box, screwing that coax cable into the TV. From there, we're gonna need to then scan all the channels, which takes about 15 minutes per TV. And then, you know, and then a little bit of education on using the remote and getting the right channels. So I know the way they've been doing, the good thing is, we're the last ones to go. So all the kinks have been worked out, but we're also the biggest community. So, you know, I, I know Cory has said in the past, you know, they start scanning the channel, you move to the next room, then you come back. Or you move to the next two rooms, and then come back and do a little bit of backtracking. So it might be, you know, everything's not done and someone leaves, but they'll be back momentarily. So there'll be a lot more information on that. What we're asking of you, and I know that we've asked in the past, is please locate the remote for your TV. Spectrum boxes will be going away, which means Spectrum remotes are going away. So we do have some universal remotes that we'll have for that day, but that will certainly add to the process. So, you know, doing the math, 15 minutes of TV, there's a lot of TVs in here. So that's a lot of time. So we're gonna plan on, you know, getting as many as we can done the first day, but we also have a team of about 15 to 16 people that are gonna be going through just in this building. It's also happening at the nursing home in the terrace on the same day, same time. Once they pull that plug, the proverbial plug, I guess, we'll call it, once they pull that plug, there will be no cable. So it's not like we can do half of them on Monday, and everyone will have cable, and then do the other. So it will be stopped as soon as we start the switch over. Yes?
Which Monday is the session with Cory? This coming Monday?
This coming Monday.
Okay.
Yep, so a week before we're gonna do it, Cory's having it this coming Monday, and then the following Monday, we're gonna start.
Well, no TV, basically, a couple of days.
Well... So the question was, no TV for a couple of days if you haven't had yours done. We're hoping to get to the majority of the people in the first day. We do anticipate that there'll be some leftovers that we have to get to in the second day, yes? Yes?
Paula, I'm sure you haven't forgotten, but you didn't mention your cottages.
Cottage is what are included, and yes, are part of that. When we were looking at, and we'll meet with staff, so we're all gonna organize, you know, that morning as well, and divide and conquer. There'll be a team assigned to the cottage area as well. Yes, all the way back? Yep?
I have a problem just specifically with Spectrum. They don't know that I exist. They don't know that 209 was an actual room. Frank, Frank, thank God for Frank, because he spent all afternoon with me trying to get them to find out why they thought my room didn't exist. Okay? Now, I have two TVs. How do they know that there's two TVs? One's in the bedroom and one's in the living room? They're not, they're not, you know, how, how am I gonna tell them if I'm not present when they come? How are they gonna know that there's two TVs and two boxes?
So we will, we'll look, I mean, we'll look to see that if there's, you know, we'll look throughout the apartment to see that we're getting every box. The question was, how will they know if you have multiple TVs if you're not there? So, yeah, we, we'll certainly, you know, walk through to make sure we're getting every box. Yeah.
It's clear, it's not Spectrum who's doing this, it's you folks who are doing it. So she says "they." "They" is you.
Yeah, "they" is us, yes. So we will be looking, yes. That's a good clarification. Spectrum will be here. Some people from Spectrum, they have to do something on their end to switch it to the digital. I don't, I don't know what's involved in their process, only what is involved in ours. Yes? Yeah?
Is the, I, I understand that the team is about 18 people or something like that.
Yes.
Is the, is the switch over something that you could train others of us that who are not on the team to do it on our own? Or is it too complicated, or required new equipment that you need to install?
So the question is, could others be trained? And I know, actually, the tech committee has volunteered to help too, but yes, we could. So that's gonna be a good question. I'll ask Cory that, if she can maybe outline some of that process for her Monday meeting. I think the hardest part's gonna be bending, trying to get the coax cable in the right place, and making sure we get that done. Yes?
Do we have enough cable wire? Because when people are now hooked up, let's say, to their box, the cable only goes to the box. It does not go all the way to the TV. So we'll probably need a lot of new cable wire.
Okay. I'll check and make sure that that's something that's been considered. And if you couldn't hear, that we may need additional coax cable to get to the TV, because the TV may be at a higher elevation than the box, or a longer piece needed, at least, yeah.
So our apartment is going to be empty, part of Monday and part of Tuesday. Do we have any way of knowing when they're coming to our apartment?
So the question is, will you know when they're coming to the apartment? So again, when "they," "they" is "we," which is Beverwick staff. So we don't really know. We're gonna start each, we're gonna, you know, have people assigned to each wing and just start going. But there's really no way of saying, your time's 11:05, yours is gonna be 11:15.
But can they just come in if we're not there and do the work?
So that's what I'm saying now. We're gonna need to, in order to get through this, we, we may need to enter, if you're not there, to get this done. Yes?
And that would work, we don't need to be there?
I mean, we're suggesting, if you can be there, to be there, because we're also gonna have to show you on your remote. Like here's, it's gonna be different, because you're used to the Spectrum remote. So there'll be a little bit of an education piece. If you can't be there, that doesn't mean that education can't occur after the fact. All right? Yes?
Many TVs that are mounted on the wall, the wire that goes to the wall, is our team gonna be capable of putting that wire up the wall into the TV?
So it's coming out of the back of the cable box?
Into the wall, you know?
Yeah, so it's gotta go from the cable box to the TV. So we'll have to see, I mean, I'm sure, like I said, Cory's experienced that, so I'll ask her if she had any issues with cable that's going through the wall. But the cable that we're changing is already out of the wall. Do you know what I mean? Is that making sense?
Yeah, but now that the cable has to go from the, from the wall, where the coaxial cable comes into your apartment, it has to go up the wall to get into the TV?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Will we be able to stream while, um...
I would say you'd be able to stream, yes, while cable connection is down. It would just be the cable that's affected, not internet, not anything else. Yes? All right. So I, I know you're gonna have more questions. Definitely save them for Cory. And we'll all be here on Monday, and we'll get through it. All right. I also wanted to bring up, we did put, we did put a memo out that we are not moving forward with the bocce core. I know there were some concerns. What happened was, there was, we had a surveyor. We discussed the issue. Let me back up a little bit, actually. About a year ago, we sent out a survey to all of you, asking what outdoor amenities you may want to see, if we had the opportunity to enhance certain amenities or add amenities. So the top ones were some that we already had, including the putting green and the shuffleboard court. After that, we had high interest in the bocce ball court, and we also had high interest in a gazebo. Those were the other two high-interest ones. So we did ask the project team to have a surveyor come on site to see where a bocce board, bocce ball court could be installed. So I know some of you had met the surveyor, or one of you or two of you had met the surveyor, and where they were proposing was not a location we ever intended to build it. So once we came back, and he said, here's where you can put your bocce court, we immediately said, no, that's not a good location, that's not gonna work. We thought it would be more closer to the fire road, that we could build it there. So right now, there are no plans to build any bocce court outdoors. If we want to do something else, we might look at, is there potential to have that other gazebo? We are gonna be repairing the putting green as soon as the spring comes. All of that's been worked out, and we did, we have the team in place to do it. We just have to wait for the weather. Yes?
Will still be able to play in the Italian Community Center?
So, yeah, currently, bocce's being played at the Italian Community Center, and we can continue to offer that. Yes?
Any, any chance of updating the shuffleboard court?
Yep, I did, I did include that too, with when we're doing the putting green, that we need to do something with the shuffleboard court too, to get that in good repair. Okay. So if you have errors with your takeout delivery, make sure you call 2122. If you call the front desk, they're not gonna be able to help you. They're just gonna transfer you to that number anyway. So if you have errors, I think the front desk has been getting a lot of those calls. I just wanted to announce too, that we have two manicurists now rotating Mondays. So just so you know, I know there, there's been some updated information going out about that. Resident bulletin board. So the one resident bulletin board is in the mailroom. The bulletin boards that are on the wings is really for us. So if you have something you wanna post, please use the one in the mailroom. If you have something that you think we should be posting, please let us know, but those bulletin boards get pretty busy. So we're just trying to save the space for what we need to post on there. COVID updates. I don't know how many residents we have now. I think it's pretty low, right?
It's four, three, three or four?
So I think we have three positive residents and one staff member currently. So the numbers have been decreasing. I think we've had our, our ups and downs.
No.
No, it's going down. No, but throughout the winter, we've had our ups and downs, and I'm hoping we're gonna continue to go down to zero. So... Um, so any updates with that, again, we'll, we'll continue to keep you updated if there's any changes in the protocols or things that we have to do. Uh, so renovations. Let's talk about that. So first of all, um, it's not complete, not all the furniture is here yet. Uh, we're still waiting on further deliveries. We do have some chairs, we have some tables, um, that are going in different locations. And I know even if things are placed in a location where they may have been intended, once we have everything in and once we have the full picture, we can certainly move things around. Um, and we will plan on doing that once everything's here. So as such, I'm asking all of you to please not add to those spaces. If you have personal items or if you're moving things around, please don't because their place is gonna help the designer know what's missing, what still has to come, what we need to move, things like that. So for now, keep it as is and keep in mind that we may change things. Um, we're still waiting on primarily artwork and lamps as well, so that's coming. And, um, also that includes with personal property that might be coming out, also plants too, because that's gonna be part of the renovation process. So if we can keep those spaces as is, I think once we get them situated and designed as is to, you know, moving it around should be, you know, minimal. And, and Beverwick staff can really help with that, if anyone has a particular request. Yes?
I'm, I'm sure of what you've just said about the plants. There've been plants out there for years. And what, can we leave them there? What's, what do you say? Up on the second floor, by the elevator?
So I know second floor, the north elevator, that's a big one. So if you could, if it's a personal plant, if you could move it to your apartment so we can at least assess what's needed in that area.
Well, if you put something there, then we won't be able to put the plants back.
Right, so the idea is that it's not meant to be for personal plants in that space.
That's the only place in the building where there's sunshine in the winter.
Yeah.
Big plants, so they're nice. Part of the public space.
So if there's spaces in the apartment, that would be ideal, your personal plants in the apartment. Because once we get everything set, then it looks overcrowded. We're trying to keep, trying to keep it looking good.
Yes, we are.
Yeah. So I, I understand, and if we have a personal request, I mean, we could certainly look at the situation and try and accommodate. Yes?
Well, up in the north, there was a table that does not exist anymore. And there are people that spend a lot of time doing puzzles. And so they've kind of made, well, I guess they've run out their own table or something and they're using that. And if you want that to go, then those people will not be able to do that for who knows how many weeks. And that's an ongoing activity, which has been for a long time.
So are you talking about puzzle table in the north, right here?
No, 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 up there's the second floor.
Far north.
Yeah.
Always had a puzzle table, okay. No, and I think if it was there before we were doing the renovations, we were trying to replace like with like.
They didn't put a new table in.
So it may be one of those tables that's not in yet.
Yeah, but right now, the people wanna continue doing puzzles, so they've brought in their own table and put it there.
Okay.
They said they should take that away.
So if there's, if there is a puzzle table that's needed there temporarily, we might be able to move something around and let them know?
Well, I mean, I don't, I don't know with any, I don't do the puzzle, but I know people are always...
And I can also find out the timeline, I don't know, if it's a week, that's one thing. If it's gonna be a month, that's another thing. So if there's something that's needed in the meantime, certainly we can provide that. So, yeah.
They brought a chair, actually like a bridge table and four chairs sitting where the table used to be.
Okay. Okay. And if that's something we need to move around to accommodate, whatever we need to accommodate in the meantime, we will. Um, also, just to, um, keep in mind, if you have a suggestion, something like that where you feel we need something and it's missing, please let me know that now so I can, I can speak to the library, because that's kind of been in place. Um, you know, i- if there's something missing, we have the opportunity after everything comes in and says, no, we need a table in the north for a puzzle, or we need another bookcase here, or we need another, um, something there. So I can always go back and add those items as well. So for the library, that's been the area we've been, uh, kind of focusing on because those spaces have been almost done. And, and many, many kudos to the library committee. You guys have been doing a great job in getting those reshelled, so yeah. It's a lot of hard work. So a couple of things that we're adding in there, we are gonna add additional shelving, um, that needs to go in there. As well as, um, I was looking, we were looking at the chairs that were in there and they just, they don't go with the space. Um, so we're gonna ask them to add two additional chairs there, different chairs. Um, I'm trying to think what else we're doing with the library.
Oh, the puzzle tables?
Yep, we're still waiting on the tables to come for the library. They're not here yet, those are one of the things that's outstanding. As well as some chairs in there. As, and we are looking at getting a frosted, um, film for the glass. Just because once you're in there, it does kind of feel a bit like you're in a fishbowl. So we're looking at that, um, to get us some samples. Um, and something that looks, you know, very nice with the design in it, not just frosted because it's the first thing you see when you walk in. So that is kind of a, a bit of a showpiece, um, so we want it to look, look nice. Um, so those are a couple of things that we're looking at, the library. So that's some of the things I'm talking about where, when we're done with these spaces, if there's things like that that you're noticing, please provide that feedback and, you know, we have, we have time to add, correct, do different things. Yep? Yes?
What are you planning to do with the plants in the dining room?
So the plants that are in the planters. Um, so they have ordered, um, planters that are not, you know, those wooden planters that will be incorporated into the dining room space. Um, or, or will we reuse them? That is the plan. Um, so with the dining room, that's a nice segue. Um, you've seen that they've taken out the, um, they've started work on the south dining room. So the delay with that has been the acoustical panels. They've been on back order and back order and back order. So the acoustical panels finally came in, but we didn't wanna get started in there to have to bring a lift in and ruin a new carpet that we just put down. So they are putting up those acoustical panels in there and painting and carpeting, so the timeframe they've given us is about two to three weeks in that space. Then the next plan will be to take the main section of the dining room and do similar work. They'll put the acoustical panels in, painting, carpeting in there as well. So we'll send out a memo as we get closer to that date, when we know when it is, when we'll take that main dining room offline. And, um, so that's gonna be where the space is gonna be the tightest. Um, we also talked about perhaps if we need to use this room, um, but it will be for about a two to three week timeframe. Yes? Did you have your hand up? Nope? Okay. Yeah?
Will the designing team be placing accent pillows in these lobby areas?
Yeah, that is something I did bring up to her after I saw, you know, the, the main, the bulk of the furniture come. The question was about accent pillows and I think that will go a long way.
Yes.
Um, so yeah, we can, we can add, and again, one of those things, if you have a suggestion like that, send it my way, those are things we can add on. Um, you know, I can't say, you hate this couch, we're gonna replace it. I can't do that. Some of that stuff is what it is. But suggestions like that where we can add on or enhance, certainly let me know. Yes?
Um, I've been asking the question since we started. What is going to happen to the physical therapy and the occupational therapy room? Rumor central says they're gonna be combined, but that doesn't sound like anything that would work. But I haven't been able to get an answer as to what's gonna happen with that. And, uh, those programs are, the ex, we can't get to the exercise programs until we get finished with therapy that puts us in condition to use them. So, uh, we need to know what's, what's happening with physical therapy. And, uh, I don't do occupational therapy, but physical therapy, I just started a new program and there are a lot of people here who need that. So we'd like to know what we're gonna do to that.
So the question is about physical therapy and occupational therapy. And we've actually built in clinic spaces that are right here outside the exercise studio and in between the library, there are two office spaces that will be used right now for PTOT. So they're not going away. Um, they still have a space here at Beverwick and then, but they will be in a different location, which will be right outside these doors.
So they have another own space?
They can use those spaces how they want. They could use one as a treatment space and one as an office space. That's, that's up to them, but there are two separate, um, rooms. Right now, they only have one room, treating room, and one they're using as an office. They have one upstairs and one downstairs. Yes?
What will they do with those rooms after they move?
So those rooms, um, we're tossing around some ideas, but to be determined. We were thinking of making it, um, a social media center, one of those, where you can have some faxing, some computers, maybe shredding, we moved the shredding in there. Um, so we do, we, we're always looking for office space for people sometimes, so we're kind of just, we haven't decided yet. Yes?
Do the PT and OT providers pay rent to Beverwick?
PT and OT rent their spaces, yes. Yep. Any other questions on general renovations? Yes?
On my phone, it still says, um... Trinity.
Caller ID?
Making phone calls and the people on the other end told them to pick it up because senior system should, should open. And it's been a couple of months. This morning was my brother's birthday, I was wishing happy birthday. He saw Trinity Health on the phone, he did answer. I had a cousin that I spoke to back in New Hampshire, he said Trinity Health. She answered my daughter, but she thought I died. I would get rid of Trinity Health on the phone.
So if you couldn't hear, the issue is the caller ID is coming up Trinity Health. We wanted to come up Beverwick. And we did, and, you know, it's, it's out of our control here in this building, but Kristen Jensen is the person who's our phone, uh, contact. So she's working with the phone rep to complete the form necessary to move along. So I know it has been months and I know that, um, you know, you're not seeing any change on your end, but we really are, we haven't forgotten it, we haven't dropped the ball and it's something we're trying to get fixed as quickly as we can. Yeah, I, I think it's been even longer, to be honest with you. But we really are, we have been working on it the entire time. It's just we're, we're reliant on other people to make it happen. So we're, we're trying our best. Yep? Anything, uh... Oh, another thing I wanted to bring up, so the messaging that we've been using through Point Click Care. So we've had a few kinks with that, but we're also gonna, um, push out another mass message. I believe next week is gonna be the target date for that. Um, when Kathy gets back on Monday, we'll, we'll go over that. She'll organize it with Kaylee, um, to see if the changes that we've made have, uh, have worked. So stay tuned, there'll be another message going out for Point Click Care. So that was, um, you may have signed a piece of paper to say if we wanted to push out information such as, there's a bear on campus, that whole thing, um, that we have the ability to do that quickly and timely. Um, so we're, and it just, uh, did not work as we intended and had a lot of background stuff that we had to do. So we're gonna do another mass text and, um, or not, not text, it could be a text for some of you, but just mass messaging and see where we're at. Okay? Any other questions on any other topics? Yes?
Landscaping, who do I contact outside?
You can contact, um, maintenance or you can contact me if you had a question about landscaping. Yes? Yes? So cushions for patio chairs? Okay, we can look at getting some cushions for the, uh, spring. Anything else? You ready for a joke?
Yeah.
All right. I'm not the biggest fan of blonde jokes, but sometimes they're funny. All right. Uh, so, a blonde driver was driving her car and became lost in a snowstorm. She didn't panic, however, because she remembered what her dad had once told her. If you ever get stuck in a snowstorm, just wait for the snowplow to come by and follow it. Sure enough, pretty soon a snowplow came by and she started to follow it. She followed the plow for about forty-five minutes. And finally, the driver of the truck got out and asked what she was doing and she explained that her dad told her if she ever got stuck in a snowstorm to follow the plow. The driver nodded and said, well, I'm done with the Walmart parking lot. Do you wanna follow me to Best Buy? Thank you, guys, have a good afternoon.